Just a minute to let everybody join that's going to join. This is the public hearing for the Virginia's annual action plan. We'll just give it another 30 seconds or so. Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started. So my name's Lindsay Austin. I work for Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. This is our virtual public hearing. For the.
Take your.
Can we mute folks? Okay, for the 2024-25 annual action plan. And it's also the public hearing for our public participation plan. So we're going to take care of both of those things today. And so let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So a little bit about what we're going to take care of today is we'll do introductions. I know we have several staff here. Let's see who is here. We've got, I can see Cameron. I've got a couple of staff that work for me here. If they want to hop on and just say hi real quick, I think it's a nice opportunity to introduce folks. Work at DHCD.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name's Cameron George. I'm a policy analyst under Lindsay Austin's team. I've been here about seven months. So this is my first annual action plan, public hearing, and I'm looking forward to see how it plays out and what comments you all may have regarding the plan.
Okay, and Catherine?
Hey, y'all. I'm Catherine Farnsler. I am also a policy analyst on Lindsay's team. And I did participate in this last year, so I see some familiar faces and names. But thanks for being here. If you guys have questions at any point, feel free to put those in the chat or use the hand raise function. And we are going to monitor those. So thanks for being here.
Do we have? Oh, go ahead, Melissa. I can't see everybody. So Melissa, go ahead.
Yes, I'm Melissa Mason. I serve as a data analyst at DHCD. I see some familiar names and look forward to working with you all.
Are there other DHCD staff that want to hop on real quick and introduce themselves? Hi, I'm Amanda Haley. I'm one of the associate directors in the Division on Community Development and Housing. And I think I see a few folks from my team with us. Maybe Kathy and Joanne and Kelly and Stuart. And if I've missed anyone, please just jump on in and introduce yourselves as well. Joanne, if you're with us, please introduce yourself. Kathy?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kathy Boatwright. I am the program manager for DHCD's Abingdon Field Office.
Stuart?
Hi, I'm Stuart Burrell. I'm program administrator for DAT and work out at DATD's Abingdon Field Office.
Kelly?
Kelly, Chair Pitch Planning Grant Specialist, and I also work out of Abington's Field Office.
And anyone else in PAO who I've missed? Thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. And like I said, this is focused on us taking comment. It's not really a TA session, so we'll really focus on the comment piece of this. And really, we want to encourage the submission of written comment. And they'll be, we'll talk about how to do that exactly. And this is really around the 24-25 annual action plan and the public participation plan. So last year, we did the five-year consolidated plan. And this represents the second of the five years, the 24-25 plan. It does cover five funding sources, the home program, the National Housing Trust Fund, CDBG funds, ESG, which is the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and then HOPA, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. And then, again, we'll talk a little bit about the public participation plan. We don't really redo this that often, but it was, you know, hadn't been updated in quite a while. And we thought this was a good time for us to kind of refresh that document as well, which governs kind of when and how we get feedback from you all on when and how we amend our overall plans at whatever point in time they need to be amended. So consolidated planning process. So anyone that gets money directly from HUD would be required to do this consolidated planning process. The plans, whether you can choose to do them more frequently than five years. Of course, we thought that five years was plenty frequent enough. And it does include doing needs assessments around housing, affordable housing, homelessness, and then non-housing, special needs housing, and then community development needs. And then every year, you, of course, have to do an annual action plan. And then every year, you are also reporting out on the results of what you did with those funds, which we call the CAPER. It's, you know, essentially a year-end report. And like I said, you know, anyone, any locality that is getting funds directly from HUD has to do this as well. It's not just us. For instance, those bigger localities like Richmond City, they also are responsible for doing this as well. Okay. Next slide. And see if I can make this thing. Oh, it's hiding part of my presentation. Okay, there. So 24-25, there's this little thing that's kind of a little annoying right now. We don't know what the actual allocation amounts are for this year. It's kind of late in the game. And usually, at this point that we're talking to you, we know how much money we're getting from HUD. We do know that Congress has told HUD how much they're getting. And then HUD has an opportunity to do their math. And they, you know, apply a formula allocation. And then they tell their grantees how much they will each receive. Well, that's why you see that the first column or the second column and the third column look the same. And that's because HUD has not shared with us what their math has come out to look like. I do know, based on talking to someone that is a lot closer to the action in DC, that we perhaps will know sometime really soon, but in my, in my opinion, not soon enough, what those numbers are. I do, what we do know, based on what the budget that Congress passed, that home is down by 17%. So that, that estimate for home, while it's not really a, a direct 17% reduction from the $11 million, because it is a formula allocation, it is a number that will be less than $11 million. So the other funding sources have fared a little better. But we, we don't have what those actual amounts are yet. Okay. So for CDBG, based, of course, that first dollar amount is last year's, an estimate based on last year's, or this current year's number. And then we have a carryover amount, and that's just money that we have not allocated from this year. Would give us a total of an approximate number of $24 million that we would then allocate to. And then you can see the dollar amounts for 15.5 million going into competitive, another million into planning grants. Then you've got $6 million into open submission. And then you've got your urgent need amount. And then you've got program planning and administration. So the difference, when we actually get the real numbers from HUD, you would see that that difference would be impacted primarily, would impact the competitive grant amount. Would, would see the, would absorb the difference. Okay. Essentially, same things would happen with HUD, with the home funds. Can you go back to that slide, the home slide? Thank you. The other way. To the home slide, home breakdown. There you go. So the same thing for the home breakdown. That $11 million is just based on what we have this year. We know the number's going to be less than that. We, home program, we do collect home program income from the, from the loans, the interest that we collect on the homes for the Affordable and Special Needs Housing Program. There is some carryover funds that we're going to reallocate this year. We know that there, that, that $11 million is an estimate that's going to be somewhat less than that number. And the difference, when we do get the actual number, will be absorbed in the Affordable and Special Needs Housing Program. So we won't touch the allocation that's made to the DPA program. Okay. And then, like I said, the public participation plan, it's just been a while since we've updated that. So that was something that we wanted to do a refresh on. That, just like the draft of the annual action plan is located on our website for you to review, we had to post that a while back. We, both documents were posted on March 27th for you to review. We do have a Spanish language version of that available for review. It, this is a document that, that HUD requires. It, it requires us to consult with stakeholders in developing the plans and any reports. It encourages participation from low, moderate income persons, minorities, non-English speaking persons, and persons with disabilities. Okay. And then this lovely chart really just kind of outlines kind of what that proposed participation process looks like. Where we start off early on with stakeholder consultations. And that includes things like when, you know, some of you all may participate in these things that we do, like when we meet with developers or when we talk to our continuum of cares, homeless service providers, and folks like that. That's when we're doing consultations. And then we do, we had regional input sessions. We're actually, that's part of our input session process. And then we draft our documents and post them. And then we do public hearings like we're having right now. And then we are seeking written comment, which we'll talk about how you can provide that. And then we incorporate, incorporate the written comment in our response to that into our final submission that goes to HUD. Okay. And then here's our timeline.
We've got a comment here in the chat.
Okay.
It says, "The housing choice voucher is not enough money." I'm getting feedback.
Yeah.
Everybody might.
Let me try that again. This, so this is from Steve Grammer. It says, "The housing choice voucher is not enough money to fund accessible apartments, even though it is against the law for landlords not to accept the voucher. A lot of people will not accept it. What is your advice on these issues?"
Our advice on these issues? Well, it is not, it is against the law. There is, that is, I guess, relatively a new piece of the fair housing. I would, my advice would be to report it to the Fair Housing Office. And we do have, you know, DEPORT is the home of our state Fair Housing Office. And I would certainly be reporting that. Specific issues, definitely. Yeah, and I'm getting a little bit of feedback as well. If y'all, if you're not, if you haven't muted yourself, I would definitely do so. And here's your timeline. The only thing I would point out that's different on this timeline is that now, I mean, I'm, based on my insider information that I received, I did put a caveat out there. Normally, our due date for this is May 17th. But we can't submit it to HUD without those allocation amounts. But now I'm feeling like we will have them before the 17th. But if, for some reason, we don't, we cannot submit it, that May 17th deadline is so that they have 45 days to review for a July 1 start date to the program year. But so there's at least that caveat that if we, for some reason, don't have it before the 17th, that could be a date that's somewhat later than that. But after what I heard earlier this week, I'm kind of feeling a little more confident that we will have those numbers, the funding amounts, before then. So, but you can see, we had our input sessions earlier in November, December. And then we posted that, the draft documents in late March. And of course, today is the public hearing. Okay, and then when we did the public, we did a lot of public sessions earlier and got some really great feedback. We had some input sessions in person, and we had virtual input sessions as well. It was the first time we were able to get out there, do input sessions in person since before COVID. So that was really great to get out there and be in person with you all. And certainly intend to do that again this coming, this year. We had a lot of attendees, attendees from across all the sessions, representing a lot of different organizations and regions and COCs and CSBs, of course. We had, you know, all the regions were represented, represented. And we conducted a stakeholder survey and received, and we will be collecting written comment through the end of this week, so through the close of business on Friday. And it's really easy. There's a link on our website, very, very easy for you to, to very much just, you know, if you've got it in a Word document, you can just copy and paste it right into that, that survey link. And this QR code right here will take you directly to that link on our website. You can also, if you want, just email us directly to the email feedback.ppppc@dhcd.virginia.gov or on this page on our website, or go to the QR code. You can find the place to, the link for our, our collection of the written comment. So either way's fine. We don't have a preference. Probably, I would say, doing the QR code might be the easiest way to do it. And if you have any questions or comments now, questions about how to submit written comment, we'll take those right now. Do we have anything in the chat?
Nope, not since that earlier question. But anybody who has a question or a comment, please feel free and type that in the chat.
Okay, I think we have another slide or two after this. Is that true? Yeah, okay. So next steps, like I said, we will be continuing to collect this written comment through the end of the day on Friday. So, you know, take a day or so, think about what kind of feedback you want to provide or comments. We have to respond to anything that's been submitted to us in writing. And that'll be included in the action plan submission that we submit to HUD. Unless HUD does not provide us our actual allocation amounts, we plan on submitting them, the annual action plan on the 17th. It does go to our board for approval on the 13th. We have shared the draft with them, with, again, the estimates, just like we have shared with you. And with the, the understanding that we don't have the actual allocation amounts from HUD and kind of our plan on how to handle that once we do. But I, I'm kind of expecting that we will have them next week, so. So if you have other questions. Oh, I did see a question. Hold on, where is it? "The plan mentions the creation of 90 units, which localities are involved, and with the units include subsidies for P..." I don't know off the top of my head, the 90 units, which did that refer to? Was that new and improved units? I don't, someone would have to look that up for me really quickly. When we do, any of the outcomes that are listed in there aren't specific to any particular locality, because as a state, we're doing this as a method of distribution. And all of our stuff is issued as competitive applications. So we don't necessarily have a particular locality already identified. In some cases, our programs are statewide. And in other cases, they're for non-entitlement areas only. So it really depends on the program itself. Okay, and then.
Yeah, that's correct. To the follow-up question or comment here that says it's more of an outcome at this time, they are just like goals that were set for ourselves. And then in the CAPER, the like annual performance report, that's where we'll say, you know, everything that actually did and done.
Right, right.
So we've got another question here from Steve. It says, "How will..." Nope, we've got one above that.
How will the plan affect?
Plan affect? Go ahead.
How will the plan affect each state? I, I'm not sure that I understand that question. Steve, do you want to unmute yourself and explain?
Is?
This.
This?
Only for.
Is this plan only for? For what?
For Virginia?
For Virginia.
Yeah, this plan is only for Virginia. And, yeah, go ahead.
How will this affect each locality?
How will this affect each locality?
Right, so, so each grantee that receives direct funds from HUD also has to do one of these plans. So in order to figure out how it impacts each locality, you'd have to find, you'd have to look at their plan as well. So for instance, let's, let's take, for instance, CDBG funds. We get CDB, DHCD gets CDBG funds for all the non-entitlement areas in Virginia. So you have to read our plan to see how we propose using the funds for all of the non-entitlement areas. And then you have to read the plans for each of the CDBG entitlement areas to figure out how they will use their funds. So it's a little bit of a patchwork that HUD has created for, for the understanding how the funds will be used. And then, and then it's kind of the same thing for the other programs. Except for the other programs, there are a little bit more flexibility for the state. We can actually, if we want to use our funds in the entitlement areas as well. And in home, we do so. We do so, we may require that entitlement areas also match funds. They have to bring some matching funds to the projects. So, but you'd also have to look at the localities plan as well, to see how they're planning to use their local funds.
Hey, Lindsay, may I add to that? Steve, one of the questions that we frequently get is, how do I know what's an entitlement community and what's a non-entitlement community? And if, if you want to get to specifics, if you look on our website at the CDBG 2024 Program Design, Appendix A, page 25, has a list of the localities that are non-entitlement. So those are the localities that are eligible for CDBG. Thank you. And so you can back into it. Generally, your larger localities, such as the city of Virginia Beach or Arlington County, are going to be entitlement communities. They get their own funding from HUD for at least CDBG. And the ones that are listed in our program design are the ones that are eligible for CDBG funds because they are non-entitlement communities.
Right.
He said, "Thank you."
You're welcome.
And, and then.
One other thing, Lindsay?
Uh huh.
Oh, which is just that we also don't apply any geographical preference, like across the state, because we do competitive application. So it really does depend on like the outcome of each of our application rounds.
Yeah, and then Amanda, if you don't mind, I can take a stab at this, the CDBG program design and the, the housing rehabilitation loan terms, based on the amount of investment up to 15 years.
Sure.
And in many ways, this kind of more aligns the CDBG program to be better aligned with other programs at DHCD that do, that are structured like this. For instance, if you get DPA funds or some other resources, it's, it's structured to be, the smaller the amount of money, the, the, the smaller the the time it needs to be in compliance, the more the, the amount of investment, the longer the term of compliance. So this, in many ways, just kind of brings the CDBG program in alignment with other programs and how they're structured. And then I realize it's probably an adjustment for CDBG, but it's been that way in some of the other programs for a while.
And I'll add to that, that we do understand that, that this could have an impact on the number of potential participants for our housing rehab program. And if that's the case with your organization, if you're putting together an application, just say that in the application. We, we get it.
Okay, and I, and just, I want to. Okay, and I, and just, I want to remind you, we will, there are several, I mean, this isn't like a, I mean, this is a public hearing, you know, so there are many opportunities. And maybe, Amanda, you might want to say that, you know, we've got, we just had a how-to-apply, and I think you've got coming up a Q and, uh, Q and A.
A Q and A tomorrow.
Q and A tomorrow. And, um, there's always technical assistance calls that you can do. And, I mean, there's, you know, there's lots of opportunities to c- connect with us on, on, on any of this, um, really, so. Okay, are there other questions that we need to get to here?
Yeah, we've got a follow-up from Joe. He says, "In addition, what is the reason that ARC localities are now not eligible for admin money if they have a project using CBG funds?"
I'll take that one. Um, and I'm gonna give you a non-answer because ARC is not one of the programs that I deal with on, on a daily basis. What I would suggest, um, Joe, is that you send that question to me, and I'm gonna give you an email address, and, and maybe, uh, Cameron can pop it in. There it is, CDBGprogram@dhcd.virginia.gov. If you'll send that question to me at that email address, I can pass it off to Tamara and get you an answer for that.
Okay, good. Okay, and then we've got, uh, when do, when does your pro, uh, process application for proposed? When do you process applications for proposed projects? Will there be a follow-up plan to show what projects were approved? Um, I, I think it depends on what applications we're talking about. Um, we've got the competitive closes sometime in June, right?
Yes.
And, um, Amanda, you probably know these, this stuff off the top of your head a lot more better than I do.
Um, CBG competitive applications close on, is it June 15th, Cameron?
June 12th.
June 12th, thank you. Um, and then our open submission CBG applications, we will be accepting from, um, early May until, uh, November 15th.
Right, and, um, Affordable and Special Needs Housing, I don't know the exact dates. They just had, they, they usually have spring and fall rounds for housing projects. They just closed their spring, they'll have a fall round, so it's spring, fall, spring, fall. Um, and the, um, homeless, um, special needs housing, um, they do a COC-based application.
I believe Joanne has her hand up.
Just wanted to share that the governor issues a press release when the competitive applications are awarded. And so that is a source of finding which localities were awarded from that pot of money for CBG. That's our largest CBG pot of money. The others are, um, somewhat smaller. Open Submission is $6 million. And, um, some of the others are only $1 million, and they are not announced via a press release.
Okay, did somebody already, uh, answer, is there a registration for tomorrow's Q and A?
Yes, Catherine, uh, provided the registration link.
Okay, good, okay. Okay, good. Any, anything else? Did we get everything in the chat?
Vaughn, let's talk offline.
Well, um, thank you very much for joining us this afternoon for a public hearing. I'm sure there are many other things that you could have spent your time doing. Um, and, uh, we've been doing these virtually because it's just, it's, they're easier, and HUD has finally allowed us to do that. Um, thank, you know, one of the few things that came out of COVID that was helpful. Um, but, uh, the written comment is really, that's the, 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 the way to do, um, the, 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 um, um, to, to submit it is to, to send it through that link would be excellent. Um, uh, way to submit your comment is through that QR code. If you want to just flip back to that QR code real quick, if somebody wants to grab that, um, before we hop off. And if we don't have, if we don't have anything else, y'all are welcome to take off. We'll hang on for a little bit longer in case anybody else has any other questions or comments. And, and then otherwise, enjoy the rest of your day, and, and hopefully, we'll see you soon in person.
We've got one more question that just came in, um, from Ventoria that says, "For applications for new units, is there an incentive points for plans to include units targeting AMI? Do you have a specific program in mind?"
If, for Affordable and Special Needs Housing, for extremely low income, um, you, I don't, I don't know right now off the top of my head, e- exact points, but they, you, you are scored higher if you, the, the more targeted your project is, yes. And if it's for Affordable and Special Needs Housing, they do, um, how-to-apply workshops as well. Okay. Anything else? Yeah, we'll hang on for a few more minutes if anybody has any other questions. Otherwise, feel free to hop off.
I think, uh, I think it's only us now.
Oh, okay.
So maybe we should stop recording and stop sharing?
Yes. Okay.
Good call there. I think I tried to tell it to stop.